Edgefield County Planning Commission, wet session to order for July 10, 2025. Time we are called to order, and I would guess Speaker Edgefield County Attorney, and going to be present here for the question. Our first item is the old business. Planning Commission, we're going to again review the Edgefield Road, Brim Oak Road RV park. During our 12th meeting of June the 12th meeting, we voted unanimously for a continuation of this regarding the proposed RV park that going to be located at the corner of Edgefield Road and Brim Oak Road. Order see some legal clarification to order that 24174 lot and respect to septic regulation and some other items. This time we're going to open my floor for a discussion with the commission. A site, I have here a note here, a site analysis should be made of, Catherine, it's a development site such as the site contents and other stuff, soil and topographic, all existing structures and so forth, vegetation and the road and all this problem. And we looked at some of it. And I'm a continuation with that we wasn't quite satisfied with what we had on hand, the information that we was concerned about, especially the septic regulation. So tonight, we need to, need some more input from the commission on the thing. You have, yeah, you have any comment from me? Yeah, there.
So here's the response from the attorney on that particular question, 24174.
We can't hear you.
Dear members of the Edgefield County Planning Commission, I have been asked to review section 24174 of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinance. It's my understanding that questions have been raised about whether this section would regulate private septic systems on onsite sanitary sewage. Section 24174, which is labeled lots, set forth the regulations regarding the minimum lot size requirements in certain areas of the county with particular attention to rural and underdeveloped regions. The primary intent of section 24174 is to establish a clear and consistent standard for minimum lot sizes based on the availability of public utilities and specifically community water and sewer systems. By using the presence or absence of these public utilities as a guiding metrics, the ordinance aims to ensure that development proceeds in a manner that is compatible with the county's long-term infrastructure planning. From my reading of this section, I do not see that section 24174 seeks to regulate or impose requirements on private septic systems or onsite sanitary sewage. Since we have no regulations, these matters relating to private septic tanks fall outside the scope of the county's authority and jurisdiction. The regulation of private septic installations remain the responsibility of the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services. In summary, section 24174 is focused solely on using the presence of community water and sewer infrastructure as a basis for setting minimum lot sizes in specified areas. It is not and should not be interpreted as an attempt to regulate private onsite sanitary sewage systems. If you have any further questions on this topic, sincerely.
Floated over there, any comment from him there?
Can I make any comment on the RV ordinance? Any comment? Okay. I'm getting an extra month to study this and look at everything I'm thankful for. We've got to approve this or not approve it on whether or not it meets section 2479, the RV conditional ordinance, correct?
So preliminarily, yes. Of course, obviously, this is not a final approval.
It's not final, but preliminarily, I don't feel like I have all the information, all the details I need to say that this is in compliance with the RV ordinance. Number two says that it's to preserve natural features and landscape and understand that this is a sloping parcel. And it's fully forested. So last month, we didn't get any information about how they're going to preserve natural features and landscape of the site. And then 5A, this is maximum pervious surface ratio shall not exceed 15% of the project site. I don't have the information of the size of the pads, the septic tank covers. Are you going to paint the refuse pad for the dumpsters? Is there going to be an office building? Or is the office building going to have a parking lot? And how much of the roads are going to be impermeable? Or, you know, is it going to be packed gravel? So we don't have information on whether or not it exceeds the 15%. And then C, maximum density shall not exceed seven vehicles per acre. Our ordinance doesn't specify type of vehicle. But if you go with just whatever's registered with DMV, and that's going to be the truck and the travel trailer or fifth wheel. So that would be a maximum of 105 vehicles. So if you have a truck pulling a travel trailer, then you could only have 52 pads in this development to meet the density. And then areas designated, well, I'm looking at 150 feet from any street intersection for safe ingress and egress. I don't remember receiving any information about the distances for the entrance in and out. Is it, is it safe? And I did, I did ride up Highway 25 from the south towards the north, and I did turn down Brim Oak to check that out. I did notice there's a blind hill as you approached Brim Oak. I turned in, when I turned back route, and I wanted to turn left to go south again, there's that hill. And I thought, you know, in my Toyota, I know I can get out. I can get to the median before taking that left turn. But if my husband's driving our truck and our fifth wheel, we're not going to jackrabbit out like I can in my Toyota. It's going to take time. And I don't know if a truck coming north on 25 will have enough line of sight to slow down to see a big vehicle pulling a fifth wheel, pulling out of Brim Oak. So I'm concerned about the traffic safety there. So I didn't have information about that. And then again, about the sewer system, it concerns me. I found a article, I guess you'd call it, about septic system repairs improve water quality in Horse Creek. Horse Creek was on an impaired body of water list for years. They just got off in 2008. And it was on it because it had high levels of fecal contamination from septic systems. So they just got Horse Creek cleaned up. And then there's a, on here is a chart where they tested Horse Creek, the last time they tested was 2014, which that's 11 years ago, and it had risen back up to 4%. I don't know what current measurements are, but this tell me, we just got Horse Creek cleaned up from fecal matter, from leaking septic systems. So I'd hate to see Horse Creek at risk for that with that large commercial septic system. But those are the items on the RV ordinance that I feel like we need more information to say, okay, it's in compliance with the ordinance, because we weren't given these details. And it's also, one other thing, on our packet, we're told it was 15 acres, and it says right here, 15 acre parcel, but it's 17 acres. And I understand that, I guess, the light green and orange and the pond is contained in the 15 acres, but do we have it in writing with their plan that the 17 acres will not be touched because they cannot be included in the RV park? So we weren't given that information either.
I will answer some of that, but obviously, I cannot answer all of that at this, at this point or stage. But I can give you some details. So the total green space is 9.7 acres. The total buffer yard is 0.6 acres. The total RV park, parking area itself is 5.2 acres, and the pond is 1 and 1/2 acres. The density is 4.67 units per acre. They have 70 parking spaces that are sized to accommodate both travel trailer and truck. The impermeable surface is 2.142%. Now, as for the safety of the highway, obviously, that is not up to me. I don't get to decide whether it's safe or not safe. Traffic study has not been completed. It has not been submitted to the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Approval has not been given on that item, so I cannot make any ruling on it, and neither can you. The Department of Environmental Services, of course, is in charge of onsite septic systems or sewer systems or water systems. They are also in charge of another big issue that you probably have considered but may not have yet, is, which is erosion control. So the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is a key item in development that we also do not have at this stage yet. So I cannot, I cannot, I cannot render a final decision on anything, obviously, because I have none of that data myself. At the preliminary stage, however, a property owner is not allowed to move forward to submit those items without a zoning approval from the county organization. Most counties do not hold a preliminary hearing at all. It's not, it's not a common practice. We do that in Edgefield because we want to have a public comment. That way, people can make their feelings heard upfront. I do agree with, some of you have expressed this separately, that this is the wrong stage of the process to hold this stuff. And I don't disagree with you. I'm in full agreement with that. I do believe that it would be more appropriate to hold hearings before a final decision is rendered. That way, you do have the SWEP to reference. You do have DES's approval to reference. You do have DOT's approval to reference, et cetera. But historically, we have always done it at the preliminary stage. So that's, that's kind of where we're at tonight, and I will be working with you at your next work session to address that particular issue and see if we can change things going forward. Obviously, once you get to the official meeting and you call the meeting to order and you make your motion to approve, if you're going to vote against, you obviously don't raise your hand at the motion to approve. You will call for a vote. You'll say, you know, all in favor, raise your hand. If you're not in favor, don't raise your hand. And then Fab can call for all those who are opposed, and then you can raise your hand. If those items are key decision factors for you, then if you raise your hand in opposition, you need to clearly state that at your point of opposition so that it goes on official record. If you don't, I have nothing to answer. So it's important, from a legal standpoint, that you clearly express your opposition so that I can provide an answer to it. Now, obviously, many of those items can't, I can't give you that answer until we get a lot closer to final approval, because I can't, I can't give you what I don't have. I can't answer the question on environmental issues when it hasn't been reviewed. I can't give you, you know, DOT's answer because I don't have it yet. So on those items, you know, my response will probably be something like pending further information. You know, it will not be a clear answer at that time. Now, obviously, I will bring this all back to you with all those documents with a final answer when I get to that stage. But we're along, we're a long ways away from, from, from that point.
Is there an option to approve conditionally? Like we could add conditions on?
You can, but obviously, I think at this point, since, okay, I'll put it this way. Are you familiar with section 24252? So 24252 lists items that are absolutely required for land development to receive a final approval. That includes traffic studies, DES approval, DOT approval, you know, a site survey that shows traffic. It also includes things like fire safety, fire hydrants have to be approved by fire department. I got to have a water plan, a sewer plan, an erosion control plan. All of those things are coming, come in at those times. So you don't have to place those conditions in place because it's already law. Those things have to be granted to you. You, you, you don't need to ask for them. So if you're going to apply a condition, it needs to be a condition. You know, for example, you want to have the, the hearing with me at a certain time or place, you know, something like that, but you don't apply a condition for, like, I need to see an approved SWEP, because you're going to see an approved SWEP. Otherwise, I'm going to kill the development before it ever comes back. Because I can't issue an approval without it. See what I'm saying? So the only thing I would say with conditions is, what condition would you want to place?
The entrance would be on Highway 25, not Brim Oak, and that they connect to the sewer system across the street.
I would say that in the meeting, you should call for an executive session and get legal advice from the attorney on that. And the only reason I say that is because neither Environmental Services nor Transportation Services on these two particular roads are under our jurisdiction. So the legalities there can get a little complicated. So I would suggest that before you place that sort of condition, you go into an executive session and get a legal, get a legal opinion. Now, of course, y'all are the planning commission, so if you want to place a condition, you know, I can't, I don't have the authority to prevent you from doing so. But I would advise that you get, get a legal, get legal advice before you apply a condition. That way, you know you have good legal standing.
Let's hold my questions.
Do you have any question? Don't put the input. Any input?
Right, okay. So if this were to be approved, and there would be a time when the parties of interest can appeal this process, correct?
So.
So can we explain to the parties of interest?
So the.
That would be like?
So the appeal process will go sort of like this. The planning commission's role is advisory to me. This initial vote is preliminary, so no final action is taken. So obviously, that's not an appealable item. Once I render a final decision, so once I've come before you, I have all of the paperwork, all the boxes are checked, and I render a final decision, that starts the clock on the appeal process. Interested parties that are directly impacted, and the property owner themselves, of course, can then file an appeal of my decision to the planning commission. That is the only appeal process where you are involved. That 60-day clock starts at my final decision. During that appeal, you can only consider evidence that has already been presented to that point. So new evidence cannot be submitted. The appellant making the appeal has to approve that I made a judgment in error, and then you can appeal, you can grant or deny the appeal of my decision. Your decision on that is a final decision from the county's point of view, okay? So any further appeal from that point, so let's say the property owner appeals your decision after you've appealed my decision, that goes to circuit court, and it's out of our hands, as we, we no longer have controlling interest. It goes to court, and then, of course, the court can rule, and it can be appealed further and go all the way to the Supreme Court. But the appellant for my decision starts when I issue a final, and it's 60 days.
Oh, we know you've gotten that.
So obviously, I will not render a final decision until I have received everything. But I will put it on the agenda for you, and I will do it in a, in a meeting. So it will be a publicly opened discussion.
As of this point here, we've heard from our public people, our public hearing, detailed and all, and I see, and I know our process, understand the process. And unfortunately, a lot of detail that we really need is not available because of the process. We can't, you know, the process of working, and I understand that, and I understand that too, at the point we are now, that the owner of the property really have to have certain items that they can proceed to. So we're talking, we're talking time and money matter, which I'm not interested in the money matter, because I'm not for that. But basically, I hate, I'm hate, I hate it that way, and I hate, and I understand the whole process, and I understand where we at. So what we just going to have to do is vote in the next session, when we have our next session, whatever way you want to vote, or whatever way we want to do it, or for things to proceed.
So, I mean, I can speak on that a little bit. Of course, I don't want to take up too much time on that since it's kind of a, I mean, it's relevant, but it's, it's not the same item. Because it's atypical for a county to call for public comment or have a planning commission hearing on land development items, there's no set guideline on it. There's, there's no requirement for it. So it's, it's, it's more of a up-to-us scenario. We can always write laws that are more restrictive than state law. We just can't be less restrictive. That being said, one of the primary reasons I believe that the preliminary hearing has always been held publicly is so that the property owner does not invest a great deal of time and money into a property without some assurance that it's allowed. And 30 years ago, when you had three applications a year, that probably made sense. At this point, though, I think it would be better, in my opinion, if we did away with the preliminary hearing altogether. I think it confuses people. I think people assume that if you are having a vote on an item, it is a final decision, and obviously, that is not the case. So I think for the planning commission, at least on land development, subdivisions are a different thing. That process is very long, very complicated. The preliminary plating process is, is much more involved, and there's a lot more steps in between preliminary and final. But on land development, I think it would be better to change the policy and set the hearing and the public comment period to be at the final decision. That gives you access to far more information in the process than you initially had. We can write that in a way to where the preliminary is done by staff, but you still have a work session on it so that you're aware that it is coming to you. Obviously, a long period of time can occur between preliminary and final. It can take however long it takes to go through environmental reviews and get the engineering and send it off to all the various agencies and obtain those approvals. That can take a while. That is not necessarily a short process. But we can save the application until the final decision. That way, once you do receive it, you have all of that documentation in front of you. It might not change the outcome, but at least you would have it to reference. Obviously, if something comes back and the Department of Environmental Services approves something and you disagree with it, or the public disagrees with it, they have to take that up with Department Environmental Services, not us. All we can require is that we receive that approval. You can then take that and speak to whoever you want to in those agencies. But I do believe it would be cleaner, easier, and less frustrating for the public if you held it closer to final approval when you have those documents available to you. And that's, that's my opinion. You don't have to do it that way. But I think we need to hold a full work session just on that matter and come up with a, a better system of doing this than what we currently have. And that's all I can say on that.
Basically, we, you know, I'm not opening it to the public for us. I want to open it. Yeah, we, we're not having a public hearing now. We just, you know, coming on, working on, we got here, so I don't know whether I'd be appropriate to do this or not.
Any public comments from this point or recommendations? You can email them to me. You can discuss it with staff. But this meeting does not include a public hearing, is basically what he said.
So at this point. Any comment on that?
You're correct, this is not a public hearing. You're basically planning for meetings.
I want to make you on clear on that. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Andrew, do you have anything that you want to add to maybe clarify things for people?
Okay.
And excuse me, excuse me, that's not going to help your situation. Well, I have cough drops if you'd like one. Here's some peppermint.
We all came out of there.
I think what needs to be emphasized is, you know, in our code ordinances, what the powers of the county planning commission are versus the powers of the county planning administrator. And basically, in, in our land development ordinances, the planning administrator should have local final decision-making authority on the following matters, which includes site plan review. So he, he is the person that has the final decision-making on this. He's outlined the appeal process and everything. You know, there's disagreement with the decision that's reached. But in terms of your powers and duties, it's really, I mean, preliminary approval is not within your purview. It's being submitted to you. It's up to you if you want to make recommendation to the staff and everything. But that's really where we stand on this.
Okay, we're gonna go into new business at this time. Our new business is review the proposed additional curb and gully requirement to county ordinance.
This part's pretty simple. I just added, under site design requirements, site design for commercial projects with the, an impermeable surface greater than, and you choose what percentage. that would be, of a project and major subdivision consisting of more than however many lots you decide, shall include curb and gutter in accordance with section 24170 storm drainage of this article. So, do you want to take it any further than that or just implement those percentages and number of lots? Because it's a major subdivision, it's five lots, less than five acres, and creates a road. So, you can always say any major subdivision has to be curbed and gutted. But you do have to remember, we would be responsible for the maintenance.
Yes, that's, that's one thing that I would comment on that particular ordinance. If you're going to require curb and gutter, it does look better, but it needs to be on a system that requires that sort of water control. If you had, you know, five lots or even three lots and it just happened to create a, create a road and they're large lots and there's not a lot of impervious surface, creating a requirement for curb and gutter would actually be very expensive to the county. Because when we accept that road, we are now maintaining that curb and gutter and stormwater system. So, ditching it obviously is, is much cheaper for smaller scale developments. Now, if you get to a large scale development where you've got 100 lots or more, for example, a stormwater system with curb and gutter makes a lot more sense, there's, there's a need, more of a need for it. And using, using a curb and gutter system at that point can be more cost-effective. So, my only comment on that would be, consider the number of lots, you want to set that threshold at carefully so that you don't overburden the roads and bridges.
So, this is commercial only, correct?
So, this would be major residential subdivisions or commercial subdivisions. So, it would apply to any, you know, obviously, planned developments are a custom thing and that's, that's a whole separate thing, but this would apply to any major residential or commercial subdivision that is using the regulations of the base zoning district.
Well, when this was asked of me about could we get curbing on businesses so that it looks cleaner, neater, it was more of an aesthetic question. The intent was for it to be applied only to commercial development.
So, we can do that, we can do that, absolutely. We can, we can write it in there that it applies to commercial developments only. You can also set, instead of number of lots, you can go by, you know, size. So, for instance, they build a Kroger, you know, the parking lot has, you know, 100, 100 spots and it's something like that. You can set it based off of the size of the impervious area, you know, parking areas, you can designate it for all parking areas on commercial enterprise.
So, I would think the minimum would be something like a standalone Dollar General or a gas station, to me, that would be the, the minimum size required, you know. So, if it's just a standalone shop that's commercial, that we would require some curbing there, really to keep it clean and neat, aesthetically pleasing.
Well, since parking lots are maintained privately, I don't have an objection to that. That would be an aesthetic choice on the planning commission's part, and as far as I know, there's no legal, you won't run into any legal issue making such a rule. That would be more, probably more of a common thing in an overlay district. But you could require it countywide, I don't see why you can't.
So, it would be anything that small to a major commercial development?
Right. Now, now, obviously, like a large box store, like a Home Depot or something like that, they're going to curb and gutter it anyway because they have to control the water because their parking lots are absolutely massive. Dollar Generals, not so much, but there's, there's no reason you can't require it. And we, and we can write that up for you.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I think one thing too about some of the Dollar Generals, it's only because they're short staff, really, that they look so messy all the time, but it would help prevent trash from getting out in the street if there's a curb there in the parking lot, it's curbed, you could prevent trash from getting out in the side streets or the highway a little bit, it's not 100%, but it would just create a more aesthetically pleasing area, maybe prevent trash from spreading. I'm sorry? Oh, commercial, yeah. Yeah, I don't, this wasn't being asked about residential areas, it was, it's commercial areas.
More comments on that? If not, we're gonna join, let's see, I believe I got it right here, may I say. At this time, we're gonna join our wet session, we'll take, we'll begin our regular meeting at six o'clock. We're gonna call our meeting for July the 10th, 2025, by the Edgfield County Planning Commission, we're gonna call it to audit, this time, we're gonna ask our assistant to give us a prayer.
Our Father, we come to you tonight, you tonight, with grateful hearts for another day lived. We would be remiss in not thinking of all the people in Texas right now. Lord, be with those families, comfort them, give them peace, I know it'll be hard to find. But Lord, if you'll wrap your arms around them and give them your peace. Thank you, Lord. Be with us tonight, give us calm minds, calm hearts, and let us do the county's business. We ask these things in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Everyone, please stand, face the flag, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the book of limitations and justice for all, may be seen. At this time, I would ask someone to give me a motion for approval of our agenda before us tonight?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Proposers, eyes have it. Approval of the minutes of our wet session for June 12, 25, motion?
Make a motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion to approve of the June 12, 2025 meeting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. This time, I have a report from the staff to present the sent report and approval of Platte for June.
On the first page, you have your report on growth, on the second, oh, I'm sorry, first page of your reports, and on the very back of your packet, you have your report on growth for the month. The next page, the very last page, you have your plat reviews, exempt subdivision was two, plat reviews were three, minor subdivisions were two, making it a total of seven.
Comments, questions? We go down to old business. Yes, because we have a, he has a prayer for questions, if we have any.
If you have questions for executive session, there would have to be a motion, there would have to be a public motion to go into executive session, that would be for legal advice, and then it's be a majority vote.
Anyone have any questions that need to go to executive session? Any questions to that tenor?
Talk suggested that I ask Andrew my questions.
You would like, so we'll go, you'd like to ask him, okay, so if that case, we're gonna join for.
Well, you need to have a motion.
Make a motion to go to the executive session.
And we'll make notes in the executive session.
Okay, motion second, that we go to the executive session, I'll raise my right hand. Okay, we're. Time we're going down to old business. Now, old business is a contingency of the second review regarding the preliminary plan approved of proposing development of RV park located off Edgfield Road and Brim Oak Road in Trenton, marker ID number 162 double out, double out, zero, four, six, triple out. Only at this time, we're gonna vote for a recommendation on this particular project that's been presented to us, and I'm gonna open the floor to the meeting for a motion. Hold on, for a motion for a recommendation to approve of this.
Make a motion.
Second.
What is the motion?
Okay, yeah, so, just, just procedurally, I'll go over it just, just so we're all on the right page.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the site plan. And then, once you have it situated, you can open it for discussion. If there is no discussion, you will then call for a vote in favor. Those who are in favor, of course, will raise their hand at that point. And then you will call a vote for those who are not in favor. And those that raise their hands not in favor need to state for the record their reason for it. And then you can, that's it, you close, the vote's done.
You close, the vote's done.
Floor, open for motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, second.
Second.
Okay, with, the motion is second. Discussion. Discussion. Yeah, this, we, we have the motion on the floor. The motion is for what? Approval.
Right.
Okay, now I need discussion on it before we vote. And discussion with me about it.
No discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion, no discussion. All in favor of approval of the motion, raise your right hand. All not in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. I want to start. Reason, you want to give us a reason why?
Um, sure. My reason, um, is ordinance section 2479 recreational vehicle parks. Um, number two, um, given the topography of the parcel, I don't think that it will be able to preserve the natural features and landscape of that parcel. It probably will create some erosion problems. I'm still, um, not sure about the impervious surface. Not to exceed 15% is going to be met. I don't know the size of the pads. We don't know if the road's going to be paved or not. And there's a question about them not exceeding the density. So those are some of my concerns.
Okay. As a member of this planning commission, I'd like to share some concerns regarding the proposed RV park development on land zone general commercial. While the zoning designation allows for a variety of commercial uses, including this one, it remains the responsibility of the commission to ensure proposed projects comply fully with all applicable ordinances. One area of concern is the access plan. At this time, without DOT approval, I'm not comfortable in voting in favor. The topography and underground springs, which feed into the network of multiple ponds, streams, is also of great concern to me. How will this affect the neighboring areas? Additionally, I question why this type of operation is being proposed in an established residential area when other locations, such as the Bettis Academy Road area, may be far better suited for this type of use. Selecting a site that does not directly impact longstanding neighborhoods would better align with responsible planning practices and help avoid unnecessary, unnecessary conflict between land use and community character. This property was purchased in 2022, and I believe it was listed for sale but did not sell. Now, three years later, this project materializes in a proposal that raises significant questions about long-term planning, site suitability, and alignment with community interest. I'm also concerned that the proposed development does not include an on-site overseer or manager. For an RV park, this would require ongoing maintenance, security, compliance oversight. This absence could present operational and safety challenges that are difficult to address remotely. With these factors in mind, I fully understand that the determination is in the hands of DES and DOT. I do not believe I can support approval of this project in its current form. I appreciate the efforts made by the applicant, but I am not in favor.
Picking back on what, um, she had said.
You have a statement?
I am not satisfied that we meet, um, the county ordinance. I'm not sure this project's in compliance. I don't think it's going to meet DOT nor, um, environmental services sewage. I don't feel like it's in best interest to the community or adjacent landowners without harming their properties and staying with the, um, feel of that neighborhood and in, in compliance with the ordinances at all.
I'm unclear on the acreage, on the 17 to 15, on what they're actually taking up with the lot sizes and the vehicles. I'm uncertain with the safety of the public on how they're going to handle everything without an office and doing everything remotely. And what their leach fields and all are going to handle, which is up to DHEC and not us. So I'm just, I'm unclear on all that.
My concern are that, I know I ordered, I know the regulation now, but I'm, I'm, I'm aware and concerned about the future, the future. I've seen so much happen down the future when we've got to. The concern of what's going to happen after the fact. And once a, a train is rolling, it just don't stop. And I see a lot of possibilities that I've seen in the future concerning runoff, contamination and stuff. I've been in, my business, I've been in the business of plumbing and so forth for that. Saw it, collection landfill, all the years. And I'm just not comfortable voting, not that I disapprove of the RV, but I'm not comfortable voting at this time with the conditions that we have. That's my statement. We voted.
Make a motion.
Motion that we adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.